Called to order the 10:00 AM meeting of the Mobile County Commission, our conference meeting in preparation for our Monday regular meeting. Do we have any speakers?
We have three people signed up to speak. They're all in relation to Agenda Item Number Seventeen, and George Talbot would like to greet the Commission.
We're here regarding item number seventeen on your agenda, which has to do with the Local Fiscal Recovery Act. And no speeches this morning. We'll save your time. We're just, we just wanted to be here to answer any questions and be available to you if there's anything you wanted to ask about that item. And so I'll stop there.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it? All right.
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 12th, 2021. Number two, approve list of claims. Number three, approve amending Mobile County Commission Conference and Meeting, scheduled to add a conference on August 19th, 2021 at 10:00 AM. Number four needs to be voted-
That's not when you were gonna be gone.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
It's the week before.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Number four needs to be voted at the conference. Approve appointment of Michael Ropich to serve on the Board of Directors of the Kusla Water District to represent Place Three, Smithtown Oak Grove, for a four-year term expiring August 4th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Number five needs to be voted at the conference. Approve appointments of Abigail Amick, Roger Smith, Willow Sprinkled, and Brooklyn Power to serve on the Mobile City County Youth Council to represent District Two, each for a one-year term expiring August 4th, 2022.
I'm not sure that one of those will actually represent District Two. I had four applications come in, and I have three slots, but they were all very worthy candidates. And we called the Youth Council to find out if there were any at-large positions available, because I hated to leave one of them, one of the four, out. And they said to go ahead and, and make an appointment, and they would, you know, and they would be able to plug that person in, in an empty slot, so.
They'll figure it out.
They'll figure it out. Just, I just hate the turn down of, you know, somebody that's ready, willing, and able to do it. So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve reappointment of Dr. Janice Denise Smith to serve on the Mobile County Board of Human Resources for a six-year term. Number seven, approve reaport, reappointment of Jeff Kahn to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Mobile Sports Authority for a three-year term. Number eight, approve reappointments of-
Do we know whose district, whose district appointee this wa, he was? But he's-
It's mine.
And he's okay?
Yes. Yes, I've had a lengthy conversation with Danny Cordy and this gentleman, so.
Number eight, approve reappointment of Glenn Hodge and Cynthia Coleman to serve on the Board of Commissioners of Mobile County Communication District for both a four-year term. Number nine, approve contract with Chickasaw Chamber of Commerce in amount of 15,000 from District One funds for the City of Chickasaw's 75th Annual Founder's Day Celebration Event. Number 10, approve contract with Trinity Garden Falcons Athletics in amount of $10,000 from District One funds for operational expenses and football uniforms. Number 11, approve amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Tetra, Tet, Inc., to provide up to $979,300 for an eviction prevention program via a subcontract with Legal Services of Alabama, Inc., to provide legal and related case management services to assist ERA-eligible tenant households at a risk of eviction subject to final legal review. Number 12, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Bayfront Park Restoration Improvements, Bees, Beach Installation. Thirteen, approve amendment number one to Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Mot McDonnell Alabama LLC dated June 25th, 2021, to add task two, construction engineering and inspection services for the construction of Bayfront Park Restoration and Improvements, Bee, Beach Installation. Number fourteen, approve memorandum of understanding with the City of Chickasaw for implementation of Restore Project, City of Chickasaw Shore Rehabilitation Project. Number fifteen, approve assignment for improvement to Whistler Bicycle Trail Park to Watermark Design Group LLC for design bidding and project administration associated with enhancements to existing bicycle trail for proposed fee of $39,800. Number sixteen, approve change order number two for renovation of Davis Avenue Library. The change will increase the contract by $176,403.95, and the new contract total amount will be $893,605.47. Number seventeen, approve master services contract with Volker, Inc., to provide professional services for the Mobile County Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Task one, program plan development and project selection pending final legal review.
Question on that one. Um, I, I know that early on, we, we had had some discussions with PFM. Are they still involved in this?
Uh, yes, they are.
Pardon?
PFM is, is still involved.
Okay, so what services-
It's on the financial.
Will PFM provide that? I, I guess I'm a little unclear of who's doing what.
Uh, Dana, you want to give the details on that, please?
Monitoring, maybe? I think so.
Well, I get that, but it's, it sounded pretty comprehensive.
Um, yes, actually, um, PFM, we already have a contract with them.
Right.
Um, so we wouldn't need another contract. Um, and that would be just for supplemental information I may need, but Volker and Horn would be the primary ones, um, in the contract. It would only be if I had something that I would need within my job scope from PFM, um, to get a better understanding. But that's within their contract that we currently have them-
Right.
-under contract for. But all the heavy lifting will be due from, um, by Volker.
Okay. So once the, the Commission approves a, a final categorical list that's going to be submitted, uh, to the Treasury Department and specific, uh, projects, then Volker will evaluate those? Is that how that's gonna work? How is that gonna work?
I prefer to Volker to see in their methodology.
Hi. The actual methodology, we'll be working closely with the county on that program design, uh, understanding your priorities for those projects and the allocation. And part of that is really walking through and understanding the, the use of funds, where you want to use those funds in eligible use categories. So, uh, we'll be doing that in concert with the county, and, uh, then that list will be presented to the county for approval. At this stage, you do not have to go back to Treasury for approvals for a given project. So, um, there's, there's not, you know, preapproval required. You tie that back to, uh, the justification of the guidance, the interim guidance that's currently out, and that's sufficient. Then we have regular reporting sequences, um, as designated by Department of Treasury.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I had one question. In reviewing what Volker's going to do, does this phase that we'll be approving or considering approving on Monday, does it include a final, the final plan of what the projects will be and how we move forward with implementing those projects?
So the Task Order One, I'll just walk through that. Basically, it includes that, uh, definition, use of funds, we'll have training in there as well. We have an interim report development that will take actually what's already been, um, developed internally at a, at a conceptual level. Um, there's currently, uh, in conversations that we've already had with the county, and I've seen the website, soliciting public input for that, which is super. I think that goes down the right path. Then we'll have a, a public comment period, if that's something that the county wishes to do. Um, also a, um, a hearing, if that's something as well. And then we'll work, work into what we call the finalization of that implementation plan. So, um, that includes, uh, making sure that, uh, those projects are allocated for, uh, clear and urgent needs. There's some, we talked about possibly immediate projects would fit that profile that, uh, you know, don't need a lot of buy-in. There's, there's definitely need to do that. So to answer your question, we would be developing that project list in Task Order Number One, and at the end of that, um, providing options for the county to go ahead and move forward, uh, with those given projects.
So there wouldn't be any additional costs af, after that for the plan? In other words, that's included in with Task-
That's, that's just the initial implementation. So, yeah, we anticipate follow-on task orders that are gonna allow us. That plan is a, a living, breathing document, because we'll have the initial policy guidance. But since the, um, the final guidance is not out yet from Treasury, we have to document every stage of what we're doing and make sure that it complies with what's been put out publicly at the time. So this will change a little bit over time, and for future task orders, depending on how the county will set up other programs, whether that's, you know, allocation for, uh, public infrastructure or, uh, direct assistance. I mean, there, there's a whole use of funds that are appropriate, and we'll need to, uh, have the appropriate structure to administer that.
So at the end of this first phase, we will have projects that are considered to be eligible that can move forward for implementation?
Correct.
Well, I just want to ensure that, uh, I, I think we all have a, an idea. I mean, we, we've read the guidelines, and we know basically what, um, what may fit within those guidelines, whether it's directly or, uh, because of financial harm, you know, the reimbursements there. I just want to make sure that, uh, that, that the Commission is developing that list, and then Volker is administering it and making sure that they, they fit within the categories.
Correct. And, and that's exactly why we're here, to make sure that we're doing it in a manner that's consistent with Treasury guidance and having the policies and procedures to administer those projects. Want to maximize the use of funds and make sure that there's not going to be any, uh, pullback from Treasury after the facts, and these particular funds did, did not meet, you know, the regulations or guidance at the time.
Thank you.
In order for, uh, Volker to kind of hit the ground running and to have kind of like a preliminary basis of what the Commission wanted to focus on, um, I took everybody's, uh, submissions, um, from each Commissioner. Um, I developed a spreadsheet or a chart with all the five focus areas, and I took all of your, um, submissions by district and put them in the focus area so that we would make sure it lined up with Treasury. So they will then take that and then communicate with you about specific projects and programs that meet your initial interest areas. So that, does that, okay?
Right. But we do have the, the direct, um, guide, the guidelines meeting, having met them directly based on what's laid out, and then that financial harm, uh, reimbursement, which is pretty much open-ended, correct?
Right. Each Commissioner, um, had a, um, program in there to address the, um, needs of those that have been financially harmed, and that's under the economic, um, aspect of the law. So, um, and I'll, of course, uh, send it to you so that you can see that I took every line of your submission and categorized it. Then Volker would go in and then meet with each of you to, um, talk about specifics.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, um, once you receive all of those, the, whatever kind of conversations about what is common to our list and that kind of thing, and if there's something there that's not appropriate, I'm assuming that part of your role will be to say back to us, you know, that's a really nice idea, but based on our understanding of the rules, it's, it's not eligible.
Yeah. Uh, I'd say, yes, I'm, I'm with Horn, which we're partnering with Volker on this. So, uh, for you guys not familiar with Horn, we, we work coast to coast. We're actually out of Ridgeland, Mississippi, but we work coast to coast handling money, uh, like this. Uh, we've, we've managed about ninety billion dollars in federal funds over the last ten, fifteen years. And so it's a very good question. Um, we monitor day-to-day, uh, not only what state legislatures are doing, what, what cities are doing, what counties are doing. Uh, we, we see what's going on. We're also filtering that, and we have kind of our own internal filters that will work in conjunction with Volker and what they're also seeing, uh, to make sure that, uh, you guys are properly aligned with what the proper expenditures are, uh, within, you know, we try to expand the bounds of, of imagination. So we want you to have big imaginations, but we also have to work within the framework of what Treasury, the guidance that they give us. And so, uh, it's a long way of saying, but to your point, yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll, we'll hear everything, um, and if it's something that we feel is a, a higher-risk profile, we'll let you know that, and then we'll work through that risk pro, risk profile and inform you. So we'll enable you to make those decisions properly, um, and, and hopefully kind of be, uh, bumpers on the bowling lane for you, so that you're, you're rolling strikes and no gutter balls, so.
In other words, you will push back if you think you need to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're here for. We, uh, you know, we want to make sure that there's no, uh, de-obligation of funds. So, um, Horn, our, our, this practice was born out of Katrina, and our governor at the time recognized that, um, we were gonna get a lot of money, uh, and if we misspent it, it would bankrupt the state, because we're a poor state, and we don't have the ability to cut that check back. And so, uh, at the core of what we do, and what we do in concert with Volker, is, is to make sure that, uh, that these spends are proper, that they're properly documented, that a third-party auditor can look at it and see exactly why we did what we did and why this is permissible spend. So, uh, that, that's, uh, our ethos, and that's, that's what we do every day.
Thank you.
Commissioner, uh, just one thing that I would add on that, and while, uh, Horn is a valuable partner on this, having administered programs in other states that are already actively, uh, expending these dollars, we're seeing what is eligible, where, where they are pushing back. And so we're incorporating all that into our current policies and programs. So, um, that's not only at other state levels, but also at counties.
Okay. Number eighteen, there's been a, Commissioners, there's been a change in wording. Number eighteen should read, approve subscription agreement with Information Transport Solutions, Inc., in amount of $10,044 for CiscoDuel for one year for the County Commission. Number nineteen, approve sponsorship agreement with African Town Community Teach and Outreach MPO in amount of $1,000 from District One funds for its annual community heritage festival. Number twenty, consider taking the following action on bids. Number twenty-one, approve purchase of two 17.5-ton prepackaged unitary gas electric rooftop units to be installed at the Metro Jail under the current purchase cooperative, U.S. Communities, from Train, U.S. Inc., during business as Train in amount of $59,774 for the Building Maintenance Department. Number twenty-two, approve purchase-
Can you hold off?
Sure.
Uh, in our last meeting, I thought we set up some kind of working group to look at HVAC issues generally at the jail. Am I making that up? Tyler? I just, I'm asking because we're about to make an expenditure for some, is, is this gonna, is this consistent with that working group?
Um, no, ma'am. Um, what we set up on the last meeting was a, um, we, we, uh, expanded one of our consultant's, uh, um, responsibilities to do some legwork to investigate the, uh, smoke and fire alarm system that we have over there. We're doing some upgrades to those systems, make the jail safer, and, um, those, those are related to the air conditioners, but, uh, this is, this is separate. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I guess what I've read that I thought that we were trying to get to the bottom of whatever the HVAC issues are, because we seem to be buying a whole lot of HVAC stuff for the jail.
Yes, ma'am. It's because we have so many at the jail. There are over fifty units, and, um, we just have continual attrition with that. Uh, and, and part of that is due to the jail being, uh, built in sections. If it was built all at one time, it probably would have had a cold-water chiller plant the way the government plaza has, and that would be considerably less problematic. Um, at the point in the past, we, we looked at swapping over to that, but to do that retroactively would be, um, a lot more expensive than just continuing down the road we're on.
Okay.
And it's not that we're losing, um, units at a, at a high rate, it's just we have so many that we continually have one that's met the end of its life cycle.
Gotcha. I didn't realize there were fifty units there.
Yes, ma'am.
Number twenty-two, purchase of one astrophysics x-ray inspection system under the current state of Alabama from Grainer in amount of $39,929.26 for the 13th Traditional Court Police Department. Twenty-three, approve purchase of courtroom audio equipment from Pinnacle Networks under the current purchasing cooperative in amount of $38,868.58 for James T. Strickland Youth Sen, Center. Number twenty-four needs to be voted at the conference. Approve renewal of warranty agreement with DJI Care Refresh in amount of $279 for drone for the County Commission.
So moved.
For a drone for the County Commission?
It's a warranty agreement for the repairs.
Okay. Second.
Twenty-five, approve maintenance agreement with Sammy Mitchell, Jr. and Associates, Inc., in amount of $3,700 for currency coin recycler for the Revenue Commissioner Office.
Can I go back for one? Is, uh, twenty-three a COVID-related purchase?
This is for the sound system.
The au, the audio?
Yeah, it'd be similar to what we have here.
Okay, so it's nothing to make safer. I was just trying to put on somebody else's dime. That's why I was asking. Okay.
Twenty-six. Uh, Commissioner, twenty-six we're gonna remove. Uh, we noticed that that was on July's agenda.
Twenty-six removed.
Yes, ma'am. Twenty-seven, approve renewal of hardware maintenance contract with DLT Solutions LLC in amount of $14,508.72 for Oracle Premier Support for the Sheriff's Office. Twenty-eight, approve renewal of software license agreement with A, SHI in amount of $17,599 for Nemo Q under the current purchasing cooperative, Omnia Partners, for the Revenue Commission Office. Twenty-nine, approve annual equipment warranty and software license display agreement with Nemo Q in amount of $1,794 for the Revenue Commission Office. Number thirty, approve renewal of GFI Land Guard Subscription Agreement with Abacus Technologies in amount of $5,000 for County Commission. Number thirty-one, approve renewal of SQL Prompt Professional Support Agreement with Redgate Software LTD in amount of $1,020.49 for the County Commission. Number thirty-two needs to be voted on today. Approve rescinding County Commission action in March 22nd, 2021 minutes. Agenda Item Number Thirty-two to amend the Region One contract for disaster removal monitoring services awarded to Thompson, excuse me, Engineering, to increase the compensation paid to Thompson Engineering by a sum of $250,000 over the fifteenth, 15% cap, and approve amendment to the Region One contract for disaster removal monitoring services awarded to Thompson Engineering to increase the compensation paid to Thompson Engineering from 15% cap to 25% cap.
Eddie, did you want to explain why, why this is happening?
Sure. So, excuse me. We reviewed the, uh, expenses, uh, from Thompson, and we believe there to be circumstances that contributed beyond their control to these higher costs. Uh, we believe these costs to be within the historic values that are typically accepted by FEMA for monitoring services, and FEMA has indicated to us that revising this cap is not uncommon in, uh, what they typically review and approve. So, uh, based on that, we believe the, uh, the cost to the county, uh, should reimbursement come through to be in the range, our share, county share, would be in the $50,000 to $60,000. It's what we're talking about here today. So based on all of that, we, uh, have prepared this and recommend this to the Commission for approval.
So moved.
Are we voting on this today?
Yeah.
Second.
And Commission, we have two add-ons. First one, number one, approve appointments of Carrington Jones, Janice Coleman, and Lauren Pollard to serve on the Mobile Count, City County Youth Council to represent District One for a four-year term expiring August 4th, and that should read 2025. And number two, approve revision of the guidelines for Mobile County Commission COVID-19 pandemic.
Are we gonna have some discussion about the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, the revision of the guidelines for this? Uh, I mean, I think I've had, I, I just had a couple of questions. I guess one of the main questions is, um, when it pertains to county employees, are we gonna make this, uh, retroactive? Um, I've, for the, uh, administrative leave, are we gonna try to make this retroactive? For, I mean, because we've had, I, I know it-
Request the personnel board, and usually, usually they're willing to do that.
Okay. Because I know there's been some people affected, and I think I raised this concern when we changed this a couple of weeks ago, and, and wished we had not changed it, and now we're having to change it back. But I know there's been several people who have, um, because of the change, had to have used their own time when they could directly, uh, track back that they were exposed, um, at work. And so I, I didn't think it was appropriate that if we can, uh, show that it was, that you're being quarantined because you were, uh, exposed at work, that you burned your own sick leave or vacation time or what have it, what have you. And we have also, I know at the Sheriff's Office even had some new hire, hires who have been without a paycheck. My understanding from talking to some people at the Sheriff's Office, um, who had no sick time because they were new hires, they got exposed at the range while they were qualifying to go to work. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were gonna try to make this retroactive so they could be paid, and that people who use their own time could get their time back. Thank you.
Brian?
Ready?
Very good. Good morning, Commissioners. Item number one, authorize the acquisition of property and acceptance of the right-of-way deeds for the projects listed. Item two, approve right-of-way agreement for Track Four and Track Ten on one of our 2018 Page Go projects. Item three, approve right-of-way agreement for Track Nine on one of our other 2018 Page Go projects. Item four, approve right-of-way agreement for Track Thirty-four, Track Thirty-five, Track Forty-one, and Track Forty-two on another 2018 Page Go project. Item five, approve setting the following speed limit as listed, and this is a segment of Airport Boulevard, um, from basically the Mississippi State Line eastward all the way to 200, or excuse me, 2,000 feet west of Newman Road, will be at 50- will be at fifty-five and then from Newman Road going eastward to the city limits will be reduced down to forty-five miles per hour.
What is the speed limit from, uh, Newman Road to State Line now?
Fifty-five.
It is, so it's stay, is staying the same?
That, that area will stay the same. We're just reducing an area just east of Newman and back towards Snow Road. We're making it forty-five to be consistent all the way to Snow.
Where we're putting the new red light in and all?
Yes, yes, just reducing it due to the additional growth in that area. Item six, approve the, uh, FY twenty-twenty-one county rebuild Alabama contractor report. Item seven, approve the preliminary plat only of Chapel Creek Phase Three. Item eight, approve supplemental agreement number four with John G. Walton on our Westlake Road North project. Item nine, approve a education fund project to sweep the parking lot at Hutchins Elementary School. Item ten, approve resolution ascending to the vacation of Daniels Road and a portion of Johnson Road West, Reed Lane and Smith Lane East. And commissioners, this is in association with, uh, a Johnson Road West project that was one of our twenty-sixteen page go projects.
That took long enough.
Sometimes they take a little while, yes. Item eleven, approve assigning a contract to, uh, speaks and associates to get them started on a Great Drain Basin Pay Project for Reva Road, St. Michael Road and St. Michael Road East. That is it for the agenda. Commissioners, I'd like to bring up one item if I could, please. In this last legislative session, there was an act that was, uh, a senate bill that was submitted by Senator Elliott, Senate Bill one oh seven, and was subsequently approved by the legislation as Act twenty-twenty-one, two ninety-seven. And basically, it's addressing planning jurisdictions and also addressing police jurisdictions in the various counties of the state of Alabama. And we would like to recommend that the county commission enter into an agreement with each and every municipality to define the planning jurisdictions and also to define the police jurisdictions for each and every municipality. There are definitely benefits to all of that. It'll help the county administer building inspections. Also help us make sure we're administering, uh, the duties necessary for the areas outside of any planning commission, uh, jurisdiction.
When you say define, you mean define responsibilities of each party?
Um, the, define the areas that we as a county commission will be responsible for administering and the areas that the municipalities will be responsible for administering. It's going to take a coordinated effort between our legal department, our GIS department, the engineering department, coordinating with all of the municipalities. Not going to be a simple effort, but I believe, I would like to make a recommendation that we initiate that process and it's going to involve legal, a good bit of effort from legal, our GIS department, our department, building inspections.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it sounds like, uh, a necessary action at this point. We have to.
We have some existing agreements, but I understand they're several years old, have not been updated. And it's gotten a little bit foggy, uh, over the years. So we would like to define that, put it in writing so the municipalities know exactly what their responsibilities are and what the county commission's responsibilities are.
Does the legislation not define that?
Well, the legislation is quite convoluted and it's trying to cover the entire state and a lot of different, um, municipal situations. Uh, we have a matrices that we have developed that was last updated in twenty-nineteen when the city mobile withdrew their planning jurisdiction back to the city limits. We're not absolutely sure that that is what is being administered in the field right now. We would like to define it in writing so we know exactly what our responsibilities are.
Does, uh, uh, does this need commission action? Should we take a step today?
Not right today. There will be agreements that will be needing to be executed with each municipality and each planning commission if there is one associated with the municipalities and the county commission. So at that, whenever those agreements are ready to be executed, we will bring those forward to you.
Okay.
Okay. Eighteen? That's all we have, Commissioner.
All right. Any, anything else for the good of the order?
I just, uh, real quick, and I know Danny's at work, but I want us to remember her and her family. Her father passed away late Tuesday evening and-
It's Danny Moore.
Danny Moore, so, uh, let's keep her and her family in our thoughts and prayers as they go through this time.
Thank you, Corey. Okay. You stand adjourned.